Good morning and welcome to the November 8, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, we're going to call the order and read out our closed session agenda item for the morning.
Closed session items for today, November 8th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators, Judy Hawkins, Shay Johnson, and Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organizations: Sheriff's Management Unit, SMU; Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA; Deputy Sheriff's Association, DSA; Calaveras Management Union; Calaveras Supervisors Union; Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 1021; SEIU Local 2015, unrepresented employees. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation Greer at All versus Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CB43460.
At this time, are there any public comments for closed session agenda item number one or two? And I'll start with you.
There is no online public comment.
And soon none in the room. We will close for closed session and be back at nine o'clock for the regular agenda. Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for your patience. Hold on, is that still ready to test before? Okay, there we go. Thank you for your patience. At this time, we'll call the order. The November 8, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. If you could please stand for the pledge.
Stand out for the pledge, please. Okay. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll tell you later.
At this time, we have staff announcement.
Report out?
Oh, thank you. Report out from closed session. Sorry. Earlier this morning, we were in closed session for two items. I'll turn it over to the clerk for report out.
Report out for today, November 8th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators, Judy Hawkins, Shay Johnson, and Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organizations: Sheriff Management Unit; Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association; Deputy Sheriff's Association; Calaveras Management Union; Calaveras Supervisors Union; Service Employees International Union Local 1021; SEIU Local 2015, unrepresented employees. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation Greer at All versus Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CB43460. Board action, no reportable action taken. Report out for October 25th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54957B1, public employee performance evaluation. Title: County Administrative Officer. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators, Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras Management Union; Calaveras Supervisors Union; Service Employees International Union Local 1021. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators, Judy Hawkins and Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organization: Service Employees International Union Local 2015. Board action, no reportable action taken. And item four, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel re-existing litigation Robert Cochran versus County Workers Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ11897479. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Now we'll go to staff announcements. We'll start with Ms. Medina, I believe she's online.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Board Members and our Calaveras community. Lisa Medina, Environmental Health Director and Air Pollution Control District Officer. One of the responsibilities of the Air Pollution Control District is to provide burn information and issue burn permits. Burn season opened this past Friday, November 4th. When burning is allowed, you are required to have an air pollution control burn permit if the property is five acres or more, or you are operating on the parcel as a commercial business regardless of parcel size. Air pollution control district permits are good for one year from the date of issuance and cost $12. Burn permits may only be obtained in person or by mail until further notice. No online permits will be processed at this time. Please visit our Calaveras Air Pollution Control District website on 10th of November 19th. To check if it is a burn day, call our burn information line at 209-754-6600. Calveropolis residents may call 209-785-7664. We are located at 891 Mountain Ranch Road in Building E here in San Andreas with the Government Center just below the building department. CAL FIRE also requires a burn permit for every burn in the county regardless of parcel size. CAL FIRE permits are available online at burnpermit.fire.ca.gov and they are free. Moving on to animal services. In October, our cat volunteers gave over 96 hours of their time to help us take care of our kitties, and 11 cats and kittens were adopted out to loving homes. Also in October, our dog volunteers gave over 472 hours of their time to help us take care of our pups, and 12 were adopted out to loving homes. A big, huge heartfelt thanks for our dedicated volunteers. Thank you very much. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Turner. She's online.
Good morning. Rebecca Turner, County Register of Voters. Today is election day, and we are anticipating it to be a busy one. If you still need to return your vote by mail ballot, check the answer you received along with your envelope for drop-off locations. If you plan to vote by mail, it must be postmarked today to speak on it. If you plan to vote in person, there are four locations open today from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., which include Governor's Center, Parents' Den and Dress, Rethart Theater at High School in Angels Camp, Jiminyland Feather and Stall in Valley Springs, and the Town Hall of Accra, New Hell. Keep in mind that the lunch hour and 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. will be the busiest times for voting. Lines will be shorter if you're able to vote outside of those times. As of yesterday, we had roughly 15,000 voters returning their ballots already, and if you have any questions regarding your ballot, please give us a call, 754-6376. Have a great day and don't forget to vote.
Thank you. Are there any other staff announcements?
There are no further online.
Okay, I'm not seeing any in the room. Okay, we'll move on. We have five proclamations this morning, so we'll start off with item number three. If the clerk could read out.
Item three, proclamation. Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation recognizing animal kindness at Mark Twain Medical Center.
And what supervisor had that one?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is, I'm really thrilled to bring this forward and really honored to read this This is just so great, what's being done over there, not only for staff, but the patients. Dogs really have a lot to do when people, bringing them in and letting them pet them and just, it's great. So I'm more than thrilled to read this. It's a proclamation recognizing animal kindness at Mark Twain Medical Center. Whereas therapy animal volunteers at Mark Twain Medical Center play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond. And whereas Rodney, a five-year-old Lab Border Collie mix, Wyatt, a Golden Retriever, and Finn, a German Shepherd mix, spread animal kindness, enhancing the humankindness associated with their surroundings at MTMC. And whereas Rodney, Wyatt, and Finn are specially trained through the Alliance of Therapy Dogs Incorporated. And whereas during the pandemic, these pups had a special mission to help lift the spirits of hospital staff who were dealing with uncertainty, anxiety, and exhaustion. And whereas these exceptional therapy animals partner with their human companions to bring comfort and healing to those in need. So do you guys want to come up? Come on up to the podium up here. We want you to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about how you got in the business of training these animals and having these animals.
My name is Dick Brown and also involved with Calaveras Consolidated Fire. I'm a chaplain down there, so I've seen therapy dogs at work in the past. Always wanted to do that, and God provided a phenomenal dog to me. He came through Sierra Conservation Center, so he's an ex-con. He was trained by a phenomenal inmate down there who trained Finn as well. So we just kind of keep, we keep on keeping on because we've had really good support from communities, from the hospital, you know, starting from the CEO and down, the hospital has been just over-the-top supportive, so we're just grateful that we get a chance to do what we do.
Thank you, Dick. Do you have?
So my name is Joanna Tetter. I'm also a Central Calaveras Fire as a chaplain and Division G. This is Finn. He is a rescue dog also from Sierra Conservation Center's pup program. And we have had him since 2020, and he's a therapy dog for the hospital, the fire district,
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Wilson. This is Wyatt. Wyatt and I, we are therapy handlers for the hospital and for Central Calaveras Fire Department. And he too, and so I'm really surprised he's keeping it together for this long. I got into this after my husband was sick and he had to go to the hospital, and he was there, and I saw firsthand what the power that therapy dogs have, and so I decided that that's what I wanted to do, and that's what we're doing. And it's wonderful. It's amazing.
Well, thank all of you. Is there any public comments on this? Any public comments?
Beautiful dogs. Well-trained.
Do we have any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion.
Don't move.
Motion by Merida.
Second.
Second by Ben. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Passes 5-0. Therefore, be proclaimed that Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes animal kindness at Mark Twain Medical Center and encourages its citizen to celebrate the therapy animals and their human handlers, passive adopted by the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, this eighth day of November 2022. And can you guys come off, can you guys come up here? Come on up here and, so we can get a picture of everyone. Chris, come on up. Take a picture.
And one, two, cheese, cheese. Oh, cheese, where are cheese?
I put it out, I put it out, these three, so you can have it, okay? You can take this one down, and then I'll get two more on that one, okay? You want to stick it to Merida? Merida, you want to?
Yeah, I do.
Come on over here.
Yes, absolutely.
That's your...
You didn't like that one, did you?
No, I think Wyatt dropped that. Your body likes food, so you're...
We don't like that one. Okay, he looks better. Ready? Cheese. There you go. Cheese again. He looks like he's trying to say cheese.
I know.
Oh, okay. Wait a minute. You're just saying hi? I think I heard some of that again.
Rabbits and kitties are good smells.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is number four. I'll have the clerk read out.
Item four, proclamation. Human Services, adopt a proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2022 as Veterans Day.
And that would be me. So, whereas the 11th day of the 11th month at the 11th hour in 1918 marks the end of World War I, and whereas Congress approved the Act on May 13, 1938, that the 11th of November should be a legal holiday and should be known as Armistice Day. And whereas on June 1st, 1954, Congress approved an act changing the name to Veterans Day in order to honor veterans of all of our nation's war. And whereas President Dwight D. Eisenhower proclaimed October 11th, 1954, on that day, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of those who fought on seas and air and on foreign tours to preserve our heritage and freedom. And whereas all who serve take the same oath to support and defend our country, and no veteran service is insignificant even if they do not seek combat. And whereas there are currently nearly 19 million veterans living in the United States and approximately 5,000 of them living right here in Calafoort County. With that, I would ask the board if there is a motion to approve. Oh, and public comment, sorry. Is there any?
Madam Chair, Honorable Board, good morning. I am Brian Galicia, Calaveras County Veteran Service Officer. And as we prepare to celebrate the veterans in our community on Veterans Day, I would like to take a moment to talk about them. When we talk about veterans, what picture comes to mind? The Marine in full combat gear running toward the firefight? The camouflaged Army soldier working quietly to complete their mission? The Navy submarine sailor manning the sonar to warn of incoming threats? The Air Force fighter pilot engaged in a dogfight? Or the crew of a Coast Guard cutter steaming to the rescue of a vessel in distress? While some veterans do meet these descriptions, there are many others who served who do not. Each has members who prepare and serve food, provide daily non-emergency medical care, provide personal services such as haircuts and laundry. There are the members who provide the human resources side of military service. There are the journalists and the photographers, the mechanics, truck drivers and supply clerks, the military police, investigators, and firefighters. The military legal clerks, administrative law judges and attorneys, and there are countless others that make our armed forces work every day and who are also worthy of our recognition. I would like to take this time and recognize members of the Veteran Service Office team whose military service falls under this category to support the mission. Corporal Angela Shebley, United States Marine Corps, an aviation precision manager, equipment calibration repair technician. She was responsible for the testing, maintenance, repair, and calibration of aviation precision measurement and automatic test equipment. Boatsman's mate in third class Philip Boblano, United States Navy. He is part of a proud group of sailors which dates back to the Revolutionary War. Boatsman's mates are the heart of every ship, performing a wide range of duties, making them the jack-of-all-trades on ships. They operate small boats, tugs, and barges. They operate and maintain much of the ship's equipment, and they pipe calls during maybe ceremonies using a boatswain's pipe. And myself, Personnelman third class Brian Galicius, United States Navy. I was responsible for the human resources and personnel records aboard ship. This included not only military training and advancement processes, issuance of military ID cards, and personnel leave accounts and pay, but also making sure that the families of our service members had what they needed. Please join me in showing our gratitude towards our veterans this Veterans Day.
Are there any other public comment? No? Okay. At this time, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
I'm undecided, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, therefore, be proclaimed that Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes Friday, November 11th, 2022 as Veterans Day and encourage the county resident to celebrate our veterans and to show their gratitude. Thank you, everyone. Next, we will move on to the proclamation, item number five. If the clerk could read out.
Item number five, proclamation. Human Services, adopt a proclamation honoring United States Army veteran Ernest Hill for his unwavering bravery, service, and sacrifice.
I believe Doc had it.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Hill, we'd like to recognize you. It is a distinct honor as a former tanker, which means I didn't test as well on the ASVAB as these other fine veterans in front of us, but it's an honor for me to read this. This is a proclamation honoring United States Army veteran Ernest Hill for his unwavering bravery, service, and sacrifice. Whereas more than 70 years ago, a generation of Americans was summoned to serve the United States of America during World War II. And whereas through years of combat and captivity, American service members and allied forces overcame some of the most unforgiving conditions in modern warfare. They weathered bitter winters and punishing heat. They fought on with courage and distinction, often while outgunned and outmanned. Many Americans suffered wounds both physically and mental that would never fully heal. Many were captured and tortured. And most of all, we honor the Americans who gave their lives defending this country they had, defending countries they had never known and people they had never met. Their legacy lives on in the hearts of the American people. And whereas more than seven decades later, we renew that call to honor and reflect. Now forever, let us pay tribute to all veterans by upholding the ideals they fought to protect and by supporting them with the care and respect they deeply deserve. And we salute and pay tribute to the unwavering bravery of United States Army veteran Ernest Hill, who served with the 23rd Armored Infantry Squadron, 7th Armored Division. Mr. Hill endured pain and suffering as a POW when he was captured by German forces on October 11th, 1944, until his liberation on March 23rd, 1945 by the Russians. He then had to find his way home to France. Now therefore, excuse me, I got to add, Mr. Hill, we want, thank you. Are there any public comments?
Good morning. My name is Philip Boblano. I'm the Veterans Outreach Coordinator for the county. And just a quick note about Mr. Hill. Ernie Hill was born in Clay Center, Kansas, to Cora and Ernest Hill on December 27, 1924, the youngest of six children in his father's name's sake. In 1942, Ernie found himself drafted into the Army, trained in the armored tank division. In 1943, Ernie was shipped to France in July as part of a combat battalion. In 1943, Ernie was shipped to France in July as part of a combat battalion. In 1944, Ernie unwillingly volunteered for reconnaissance mission to locate enemy encampments, military strengths and equipment. Being pinned down in a small house, there were 12 to 15 enemy combatants waiting behind the house. After some engagement, there were about a dozen men with their guns pointed at Mr. Hill. He was then taken prisoner. He was taken to a building he recalls as a medieval castle. He was left in a small room with a thin window and a brick stone wall. He was held over seven days in hopes that he would talk, but he didn't. He was taken from the castle and unceremoniously deposited at his first POW camp, Stalag 12A in Lindbergh. Stalag 12A was a transit camp for newly captured POWs and had little to no amenities for the prisoners. No bedding, nor medical care and meals that were close to starvation rations. After a few months, Mr. Hill was taken to Stalag 3C in Druits, Brandenburg, Prussia. Mr. Hill turned 20 years old in that prison. Mr. Hill doesn't speak much of the conditions he endures. He keeps that to himself privately. Although in that camp, there were over 2,000 Americans, held and eventually more American prisoners from the Battle of Bulge. In December 1944, there were over 35,000 prisoners, not including the Americans, in Stalag 3C. We can only imagine the sacrifices that Mr. Hill personally made in order to be there and be with us today. On a march outside camp in January 1945, he ran into Russian tank and soldiers. Though the camp had been liberated, the prisoners, now free, were left to their own devices. The ragtag group of four found its way to a train headed towards Russia, finally landed in Odessa. After a few days' wait, the group was able to board the Caspia and head to Naples, Italy, where they finally were placed back into American hands. Upon his return to America, Mr. Hill was not allowed to get out of the Army and was stationed and assigned as a motor pool until he finally was given his honorable discharge in November 1945. After his release, he enjoyed 66 years with his best friend and wife, Bertha. And he says, "She can't be beat," Ernie said with a twinkle in his eye to me. "I'm the only World War II POW in our area that he knows of," he said. "But I know that God gave me an angel to sit on my shoulder because I didn't get a scratch." For his time in service, Mr. Hill received the American Theater ribbon, the European African Middle Eastern Campaign Medal, a Good Conduct Medal, Overseas Service Bar and at discharge, a POW lapel button, which he still has. Mr. Ernest Hill is an example of a great American hero. His love for the country is unmatched. Mr. Hill is a humble man, an American hero who doesn't look for recognition. Calaveras County is proud of the Army veteran Mr. Ernest Hill for his bravery and dedication. We are all internally grateful. Thank you.
It's gonna be a little bit like Mass. There's gonna be a lot of up and down as we applaud these wonderful heroes. Bringing it back to the board, are there any comments from the board or a motion?
I would just like to say thank you, Mr. Hill, for all you've done. And with that, I'll move to the item.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, moved by Supervisor Toffenelli, second by Supervisor Calaway. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passes 5-0. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, Calaveras, County of Calaveras, State of California honors Mr. Hills and thanks him for his service and sacrifice, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, 8th day of November, 2022. Thank you very much, Mr. Hill.
And next, we have our proclamation and I will have the clerk read out, number six.
Item number six, proclamation, Human Services, adopted proclamation honoring United States Marine Corps veteran Melvin Randall Og for his unwavering bravery, service and sacrifice.
And would I should turn it over to Supervisor Calaway?
PLC Og.
All of you Marines that are here, sympathize.
Well, to my dad, I'll say sympathize, I mean, because only a Marine can tell a Marine sympathize. But since I grew up as a daughter of a Liker, I should have gotten combat paid, but... It's okay. Are we ready?
Is it too late for you to get combat paid?
I'll have to ask, I'll have to ask my sergeant.
I think you should.
Yeah.
If he's a Marine.
Yes.
Well, he'll approve it.
Yes, he was in World War II also. Yes, so whereas World War II began on September 1, 1939 and lasted through September 2, 1945 and is considered the deadliest conflict in human history. Whereas Japan on December 7, 1941, attacked Pearl Harbor, Hawaii, prompting the United States to enter the war. More than 100 million personnel from more than 30 countries were directly involved in the war, with many sustaining fatal injuries. And where it is the right and just to publicly recognize and thank veterans from the greatest generation. Did you know you were the greatest generation?
Well, I heard that.
Yeah, well, I tell them again.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm proud to remember it.
Yeah, I know. It's our age, it's kinda hard, I know. Especially those who are living in our community. Whereas we salute and pay tribute to the unwavering bravery of the United States Marine Corps veteran Melvin Randall Og, who served in the South Pacific from January 1943 to May 1945. And on November 15, 1943, in Bogovia Papua, New Guinea, Mr. Og was wounded in action and earned a Purple Heart. And whereas on October 4 of this year, Mr. Og celebrated his 100th birthday. But that was for eating all those sea rations, you know? That's what kinda kept your, keeps your body going, right? Eating those sea rations. So...
I thought it was in heart attacks, we had.
Oh, yeah. That's right. So are there any public comments on this? Yes, Marine?
Yes, it is a Marine thing. Mr. Og, how are you doing?
Hello?
You okay to stand a few more minutes?
I'm here.
Okay. Well, one of the greatest pleasures I have in my job is to help veterans get their benefits through VA. So I'm an advocate. So Mr. Og came to me in February of this year and he was not service-connected. If you have a Purple Heart, you have injuries from war. So why was this not done? It just had not been done correctly. So I took it on as a mission for Mr. Og because Marines stick together and we fight the battle together, right?
Absolutely.
And we worked on a claim, I did some investigating, some of the best, I might say, and discovered what is missing. And that was February. By June, he had the first set of interview service connected. By August, he was service-connected to where he has all benefits and all health care, smoking care for Mr. Og. So it took him 68 years to receive a Purple Heart, 79 years to receive his service-connected benefits. And we did it all before your 100th birthday.
Well, I don't wanna try to get another 100 years or so.
Just, yeah, that's right. We didn't want that. No, but his enthusiasm and his unselfishness are traits that I'm sure carried him through all those years. And I'm proud to say that Marines have some of the best traits that carry on to our commitment to our community and to Mr. Og.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Audience.
Sure.
Because they're one of the reasons I'm here. And I appreciate it very much.
I'm sure they do too, PLC Og. May I have a motion from the board, please?
Sure move. Second.
Therefore be it proclaimed that the Calaveras Board of Supervisors...
Louie, we gotta call for the vote.
We have to vote.
Oh, yeah, okay, come on. Okay, so we thank you for your service and sacrifice and we pass it this day in the Board of Supervisors. That's another word for politicians. In the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 8th day of November.
I was gonna say that you've gotta have the politicians in.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
We thank the taxpayers for paying us too. PLC Og, thank you so much.
Well, I'm proud to have been of service to you.
You sure were. Where were you raised?
Where was I raised?
Yeah.
I was raised by a boot heel.
God. I know, honey, I just was listening to you and I said, I just got that accent down. It still shows, it still, yeah.
Where was you raised?
I was born in Hawaii.
Oh, Hawaii.
Yeah, Queens Hospital.
Oh, well, you know.
I know, that happens to some of us.
Yeah.
But I was raised on Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, Quantico, Virginia, all those Marine bases.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Some of them. Well, not all of them. Thank goodness.
Move it. Oh. I'll come over here. I'll come over here. Oh, can I hear you? Thank you.
Do you have a camera? I don't, I don't have a camera. I've got to go take a photo. I'm allergic to cameras.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our next proclamation, which is number seven and I'll have clerk read out.
Item seven, proclamation, Sheriff, adopt a proclamation recognizing November 8, 2022 as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day.
Turn it over to Supervisor Stoppin.
Thank you, Chair Folendorf. Looks like we have everyone here, so. Whereas law enforcement agencies throughout the state of California depend on individuals in non-sworn classifications such as law enforcement records and support personnel to provide them with vital services. And whereas these individuals are crucial to helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, apprehend and process suspected lawbreakers. And whereas Calaveras County Sheriff's Service technicians, senior department analysts, crime scene specialists, property room manager and records manager continually use their expertise and experience to assist, excuse me, to assist in tracking violence, maintaining criminal and civil statistics, improving apprehension strategies. And whereas these professionals serve the public daily in countless ways and these professionals deserve grateful recognition by the beneficiaries of their service. Do we have public comment?
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. I too am very grateful to our law enforcement people and also the support staff. But I wonder if it's proper to name a date out of the year to express our gratitude. If we do that, then all the other support people should also be recognized. On a previous topic, we recognize the certain veterans. Are there any other veterans in this room? Perhaps we ought to recognize them as well. Thank you.
Any other further public comment? Seems we have staff here. Would any staff like to make any comments to their brethren and brothers and sisters? Yes, sorry.
Good morning, Chair Folendorf, Supervisors, CAO and County Council. Our staff, all staff, have been phenomenal throughout the years. They put in a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of effort. They do go the extra mile. And I believe, like Mr. Segala said, all of our staff should be recognized. And I think that we don't do a good enough job of that. But I think that today is a good day. I will tell you a quick little story that last year, we forgot about this day for them. And boy, did I catch heck. Well deserved, but we won't do that ever again. Thanks to my undersheriff, she's taking care of me. She's got my back. But they do deserve the extra credit and recognition for what they do because they do do a lot. And I know that a lot of people hear about one particular person who handles our CCWs. She's constantly going above and beyond. I think a lot of these folks, they don't get that recognition because they're doing their daily work every day. And they don't stick out so much like Karen Burton does with our CCWs. But they all do a phenomenal job. So we appreciate everything that they do. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Any further?
I'm in the Department of Sheriff, Department of Police. Okay. First of all, I have the highest respect for the men and women standing behind me. Okay? Okay, what I'm going to talk about deals with the Sheriff's Department. And it's the dealings at Lakeside Mobile Estates. The tenants are with me, my wife.
Um, this is a comment only for the proclamation right now.
I'm sorry. Then I'll come back up later.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments by board members? Entertain a motion? So moved.
Got it.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Toffenelli, a second by Sheriff Folendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Sheriff, Sheriff Folendorf.
We appointed her.
I said Sheriff Folendorf is what you called her when you came up.
Sheriff.
Oh, Sheriff. It sounded like you said Sheriff.
Just not bad.
You don't give out badges?
No.
Okay. We'll talk later. Now, therefore, be declared that the Board of Supervisors of the county, sorry, I'm going to get my glasses on, get this right. Supervisors of the county of Calaveras, state of California, does hereby proclaim November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day in Calaveras County. And urges our fellow citizens to extend gratitude to the law enforcement support personnel for their dedicated service to the community. We want to thank you all very much.
Stand up. Debbie, Audra, Oscar, Karen, Mariana, Haley, Sierra, Maria. Thank you.
We need to thank you all for this type of work, really with any entity, people behind the scenes are that are the lubricant, the machine to help make it, keep everything new. You don't necessarily get gratitude for the work you do because you're behind the scenes. So a lot of people don't see that. We appreciate it. This guy can do it without you. For those of you folks that don't know, Debbie's got four years to live. Three, Debbie, how many years is that? Thirty? Thirty-eight years. A lot of thirty digits. I'm going to do what I do. Your badge.
I know.
All right, you're going to be up. You're going to be up here in a minute. And this time it'll be okay.
You drew the short straw over there.
All right, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to the general public comment. This is any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda and may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits boards from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not concluded during the allotted time period, it will continue as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder comment to be heard. So with that, we'll start with the room. Is there any public comment? Come on up. And then, just a friendly reminder, be mindful of the green light.
Yeah, okay. My wife, our friends, we reside at Lakeside Mobile Estates. And we've been having issues with animal control in the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department. This last week, a five thousand dollar deck was, our decks are not attached to our tiny home. A gentleman at the park tied a rope to it and removed it without the permission of the tenant. The tenant called the Sheriff's Department and they refused to come up. They would not investigate. They would not do an incident report. And we feel we are being endangered by that. Two days ago, which I got a picture here of in this packet I got for you, a fifteen thousand dollar park model tiny home, same thing happened. They came up, hooked it up, and removed it without the owner's permission. Again, the Sheriff's Department said, no, we're not coming up. This is Bonnie's place. We're familiar with it, but we're not coming up. We feel endangered by the actions of the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department. Sorry, I'm nervous. I usually don't do this. My wife, Rennie, Julie, Frank, and Penny, or I'm going to speak for my wife. But we've been having major issues. We're trying to take the armpit of Calaveras County and turn it into a senior home center. They have brought up thousands and thousands of dollars in mobile, in tiny homes, built decks around them. We have improved the park, which I'll show you pictures of. But we are not getting the service from Calaveras County. Especially with animal services, with vicious dogs, and the police department not wanting to respond. And we are becoming proactive. We have a news article in a mobile home magazine that's being published. And we wanted to come before the Board of Supervisors to bring our concerns to you on what is happening to us up at that park. We have drug dealing still going on at the park. We have a meth lab at the park, and we can't get the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department to help us. And we felt by coming to you, we might get that help. And I want to thank Mr. Guaramendi with our water issues there. I've been working with him. And he's been very responsive. So we still have the water issue. We have a new contaminant in there, a sulfonic acid that causes cancer and causes low liver.
Your time's up.
Yeah. I have one of those illnesses caused by the water. So who wants to come up next? Ready?
Good morning. My legal name is Maureen Smith. Everybody knows me by ree. I have a Wheaton terrier that has been attacked three times by a pit bull in Lakeside Mobile Home Park. I have my complaints, my pictures that I've taken to Animal Services. And every time I go in there, they say it's under investigation. This last time, the pit bull wouldn't let go of my dog. I thought my dog was going to die. I asked Animal Services, if that happens, can I shoot the dog? They said, no, you cannot shoot domestic dog pups. I said, what do I do? Do I stand there and watch my dog die? And she said, I'm sorry, ma'am, there's nothing we can do. And so I brought you pictures of the dog that runs loose in that park. It's not just this dog. Everybody that comes into the park to do whatever they're doing in there, their dogs jump out of the truck and run loose. And we have pictures of it. And I have pictures of my dog's injuries, and I have a copy of my complaint to Animal Services. But I'm not getting a response. Usually I've gotten an email back and I'm, all I'm getting is, I'm sorry, we're looking into it. So I thought I'd bring it to you to see if there's anything else that I can do. I don't want my dog to die. And this dog is going to get her or get him. She's a female. So Animal Services told me that because this is a privately owned mobile home park, this dog can run free and I better keep my dog leashed up. But my dog was inside its fence. And the pit bull came up to the fence and my dog broke the fence and the fight started. And this is the third time. The first two times, I tried to work with the owners of the dogs, trying to get them to restrain their dog like I do mine. And they will not, they said their dog has roamed that park for twenty-five years or whatever, and they're not stopping it. So that's my complaint. I'm sorry. Have a good day.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Julianne Hart. I also came up from Lowdi with a tiny home. And I'm retired. I'm sixty-five. I'm also disabled. And just to say a little bit about the dog, I got cornered one time and I was petrified. It still scares me when I think about it because I didn't know what the dog was going to do. And I can't run, and all I could do was scream, and it was, you know, nobody was around. Luckily, the dog didn't come at me, but that, I think, that is totally wrong. That dog needs to be on a leash. And she's scary. It's a pit bull. I mean, I know they get a bad rap, but, you know, she's already attacked several dogs. What's to say that a human's not going to be next? And me, you know? And I have a big dog, so, but I keep her in a fenced area and she never gets loose. And she's never even, you know, bit anybody or anything like that, so that's all I have to say about that dog. But the water issue is another thing, you know? I can't carry those five gallon things of water to bring water in. And we can't drink our own water. We can't, really, you can't even boil it. I have to use bottled water to cook with. It's so bad. So, and I think that that's appalling, you know? I don't even want to live there anymore. I came up here, you know, to like retire and live here for the rest of my years. And I feel like somebody doesn't care enough to take care of the water issues and the things to keep us healthy. You know, we shouldn't have to go through this in our retired years. So especially because our memories and stuff goes and different things like that. So, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Penny Chowolski. My husband Frank and I are tenants and investors in Beach Lake Village. We name, the name we prefer, not Lakeside Mobile Estates. We were introduced to park model homes in early December of two thousand and twenty. I'm choosing to give you a timeline of events, then, from then to late October two thousand and twenty-two, just to save time speaking. February two thousand and twenty-one, we negotiate to purchase park model number one. Mid-March two thousand and twenty-one, we meet Helen Ariza, hear her business plan for Beach Lake Village. April second, two thousand and twenty-one, park model number one is placed at lot number four. Month-to-month rental contract signed for space rent five hundred dollars per month, including garbage sewer water. Our business plan to invest in Beach Lake Village is progressing. We improved lot number four. May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, we purchased a second park model to be placed at lot number five, but temporarily placed at lot number four, waiting for lot number five deadbeat occupants and dilapidated double wide to be removed. Over three months waiting, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, our second park model is placed at lot number five. Seller Bonnie Tuckerman-Aho signs a contract of sale with buyer Helen Ariza. Bonnie agrees to sell Lakeside Mobile Estates, and Helen Ariza agrees to buy it to create Beach Lake Village, a senior, over fifty-five gated rural community of like-minded, educated, and professional adults. Helen Ariza continues to work closely with HCD, Housing and Community Development, to correct various violations, some dating as far back as two thousand and sixteen. We became aware of an HCD final notice of violations for lot six dated November twenty-four, two thousand and twenty, that had not been corrected. Ariza issues a sixty-day notice to vacate on August first, two thousand and twenty-one. Nothing happens. Ariza issues a three-day pay or quit notice on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Again, nothing happens because Aho is undermining Ariza's every move. We begin negotiating to buy our third park model, but delay as much as possible to give Ariza time to clear out lot six, anticipating putting our third unit on lot six. Aho refuses to close escrow and reneges on the sale to Ariza. HCD stops working with Ariza even though she is continuing to clean up the park. On January twenty-eighth, HCD suspends the annual permit to operate Lakeside Mobile Estates. Our third park model is destined for lot six, but not to be delivered to lot four, excuse me, but has to be delivered to lot four temporarily on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. I have just a little bit more.
No, I'm sorry. It's, okay.
My name's Frank Chowolski. That was my wife speaking. Well, I'm here just to say that, you know, we're here to ask for your assistance in trying to create a senior mobile home park that should be, should be a joy for this county to have that you should be proud of, okay? We're not from this county. We have invested in this county. We think it's beautiful up here. We come up here part-time, but the conditions on the property with the owner Bonnie Tuckerman, she's neglected that property for many, many years. Helen, as my wife said, has began improving it when we first began coming up here to look at the park. You should, I would hope, be able to drive through the park to see for yourselves what's happening. And if you look back at Google Photos a few years ago, you'll see on our lot there were three fully hooked up trailers besides the garbage and debris all over the place. That's all gone. We've brought ours in. We've built a beautiful deck. We want to see the park something that Calaveras County is proud of and use it as an example for maybe future mobile home parks. There's been issues with water. There's been issues with the dog. I've got him on my camera. There's a German shepherd and the pit bull's name is Princess. Princess is from the other side of the park. I'm on the complete opposite end. It's roaming around all over the place. The German shepherd is from on top of the hill. It's also roaming around, unleashed, nobody watching over it. It actually went on the neighbor's deck and was going up and down the deck. You do not feel safe going out of your own unit that you have there. Right now, what I see is HCD has not been very helpful. In fact, they say we are complaining too much, dealing with water issues, dealing with sanitation. There is contaminants in the water, which were finally proved. We've been saying it for many, many months, and they've just been shuffling the paperwork, throwing it down the tube. Anyway, they have not been of a sixth assistance, and at this point in time, they seem to be vindictive and are retaliating by coming up with other violations. We have a unit stored on our property that was supposed to be destined for another lot that was condemned and had all these violations that HCD imposed on it. It's still there. And, sorry, and mine's been violated because it's on my lot, okay? They don't take care of the other stuff they're violating me when it was supposed to be cleared up initially. Thank you for your time. So we really need your help. I wish you would drive by and take a look at what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hi, Al.
Good morning again, Al Segal, Taxpayer Association. I've been, I've had the honor and privilege of being allowed to attend training programs for the Board of Supervisors. for the Board of Supervisors in which they learn to be more effective in their communication with the, with the departments and the CEO. One of the things that I've noticed over time, there seems to be a trend toward losing our local control to state and the federal government. And it most of times attached to money that we want to get to solve a problem that we have. And sometimes it's initiated by the, by those other levels of government, sometimes ourselves. And it's almost though we don't have a plan for contingencies. If we have fire, need for fire or other emergency needs, rather than go to a fund set aside for that purpose, we would seek a grant. And with a grant comes strings in the way of regulations. So now we've got a situation where it's pretty hard to unweave it. So I have a suggestion. In the new policy manual that was created, there's a number of very good things, like governed as a team, working collaboratively, governed in an open and transparent manner. These are really good things. But one thing is not expressed is it goes toward purpose. When you have government, you have purpose and then procedure. So everything that's been gone through in this training has been in the area of procedure. Not anything about morality, which goes to purpose. So I have a suggestion that could maybe fill that at some point. And so I'll be asking it to be considered by the Board of Supervisors. And here's the wording. "Respect and support the U.S. Constitution with the moral imperative of protecting the rights to life, liberty and property." That is pretty, as concise as I can make it, and perhaps it would do some good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al.
I haven't started speaking, I'm already losing time. Good morning, Bonnie, I'm sorry. Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. I was going to come and complain about the union, but Jack, I want a request. I own a couple of old houses on Double Springs and I don't spend time on, in each of them equally. One day I went to my other house and, I call this the whitewash story. I went on my patio and somebody had taken a bucket of paint and dumped it all over my bricks. And I was freaking out. I couldn't believe it. Who have I pissed off now? I know I make people mad, but I went and I looked and I said, my God. And then I looked over there, they did it over there too. And I looked at, it was on top of my hot tub. And I, I looked up and, oh my God! Twenty, thirty vultures sitting in my ash tree. What a bad omen. Vultures nesting in my yard. What am I going to do? I screamed. They flapped around and squirted a little bit more and it was just disgusting. Called up Jody Taylor. What do I do, Jody? BB gun? You know, rifle, shotgun? No, you can't kill a vulture. What do you mean? What am I going to do? Get a slingshot. A slingshot? Give me a break. Well, I went to Walmart, I got a slingshot and I come back and it looked like there were more of them there. I was just horrified. So I grabbed the closest rock, it wasn't even round. And I got my slingshot, I don't use slingshots. And I shot, didn't hit them. Hit the bark of the tree, it scattered. And they all flapped around and squirted some more and flew off and never came back. P. Genie had cut down a eucalyptus tree and mine was the tallest one. Thank God they left. I didn't know you couldn't kill a vulture. My God, they're coming to kill me. Anyway, hell of a lesson to learn in Calaveras. And I wasn't new then, I'd been around for a while. Thanks.
Are there any other public comment in the room before I switch over to Zoom? Okay, not seeing any, I'm going to go over to Zoom.
There is no online public comment.
Okay, okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the next.
She just, we just want a couple items, okay? I'm speaking for you, if that's all right.
Is that all right?
We've allotted each person an individual, but go ahead.
Okay, one, I'd like to drop off a complaint that I didn't mention. There, Ms. Aho is doing a major repair on the leach field without permits. Are it being engineered? That is one. The only time the gentleman's up there working on is Saturday and Sunday. I was a contractor. You do the illegal work on the weekend when the inspectors aren't around. And second, I'd like to give you, this shows pictures of the park before and after. And this is the formal complaint. I guess it's the Environmental Management Agency. Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Yeah, this show, what it does is shows our correspondence. Yeah, this is for Mr. Garamendi and the other supervisors. And what do I take that?
That is the building, uh, recording for the week. So we're going to have time and, um, building who it is. And how sort of, um...
Perfect, thank you. And Mr. Garamendi, we have Maria Albrado Gil, our Senate candidate, one of the Senate candidates for the state. She came and visited the park for two hours and reviewed all this with us. And would really welcome any of the Board of Supervisors come up and visit the park and see what our vision is. And like Frank said, we're trying to make it a jewel of Calaveras County. So we're all proud of it. That's our goal. And everybody is investing well over $100,000 for each one of these sites. So we, they have invested 1.3 million into the park. Like I said, we're trying to transform something bad into something very good that we're all proud of. So I really appreciate you letting us come today. Especially you, Mr. Garamendi. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda as there's no Zoom or other public comment. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, interested party may request removal of an item from the consent for later discussion. At this time, I will look at the board. Are there any board members that wishes to pull an item off consent? See a none, is there any public comment on consent? Any, any Zoom?
None on Zoom.
Okay.
Did you, can you come up to the mic?
Number 11, now, okay. Thank you. Are there any staff members that wishes to pull an item off this consent? See a none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda other than 11?
Submove, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Al, we're up. Number 11.
This is a resolution from the Audit Controller to adopt a resolution establishing fiscal year 2223 appropriations limits for the county of Calaveras and special districts. I just wonder if there could be a better explanation of what that is? And is that taking into consideration the $9 million debt that we have in that, in that resolution? Thank you.
Okay, now this just, this just has to do with a limit upon spending and your adopted spending in a year. And it's establishing that limit. And by adopting it, that establishes it, but we're well within that limit.
And it's related to the GANs too. We're capped at the GANs limit. Okay, are there any other questions? With that, a motion to approve a consent agenda item number 11.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So next we'll move on to the regular agenda. We have item number 29. I believe we need to get set up. Yes. So while we get set up, we'll take a five-minute break to allow Brian to get on the laptop to get that work. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Party. Okay, we're live. We, regular agenda item number 29. And I will have the clerk read out as soon as she gets back to her mic. There we go.
Okay. Item 29, informational item. Human Services received a report from the County Veteran Services Officer, Brian Galicia.
Okay, Brian.
Good morning, once again. I am Brian Galicia, County Veteran Service Officer. I wanted to come before you again, as I did in May, and provide a semi-annual report on the status of the office and the clientele that we're seeing. The information today is going to be actually taken from local stats outside of what we did in May, which is taken from the California Association of County Veteran Service Officers, which publishes their annual report in the spring. Next year, next May, I will present the information from then. As you can see here, the statistics are just this fiscal year, beginning July 1st through October 18th. The contacts, we've seen a slight increase. Phone calls, 216. In-person visits, 315, for a total of 531. We've done 23 outreach events, which includes medical outreaches, where we have the medical van from Palo Alto come up and be available for our veterans who really can't get places or aren't connected with VA healthcare yet. The other items would be our support groups that are run every other week, twice a month right now in Valley Springs and twice a month in Murphy's. I was mentioning to Supervisor Garamendi that we are looking to possibly start one in West Point or Glencoe area. We're going to gather some information before we just open that up and see if we can't do that. Total contacts from the outreach event so far, 219 so far, which is actually a really, really good number. So as far as claims, we've submitted 285 claims, serving 190 veterans. The total compensation claims for disability compensation was 87. Six already had been awarded by the time I pulled the statistics. We've done 17 healthcare enrollments. And we did have our booth set up at the county fair. We were there all four days and I saw most of you. And we had a good, 226 good contacts from that. And once again, the statement we heard the most was, we didn't know that you existed. The awards, so the money that is listed in retroactive awards, the $252,862.93. This is money coming into the county economy in the form of compensation awards made to veterans who filed claims. And these are claims that were awarded during this three-month period. The claims would have, most, most of them would have been filed previous to this timeframe, but they were awarded during this time. So that's when that money came in. The new monthly awards totaled $40,127.33. Every month, we have those new veterans getting those, that new amount of money. College fee waivers. This was our busiest time of the year. We processed nine, which, the value of which is $74,856 in college fee waivers for the dependents of veterans who are, have service-connected disabilities. What's coming is, and I'm sure everybody's heard, the PACT Act, which is the official name, Sergeant First Class Heath Robinson, honoring our promise to address comprehensive toxins act of 2022. The act was signed on August 10th, 2022, and it is the largest changes to our programs that we've ever seen. There are going to be veterans who were not eligible to healthcare, who will now be eligible to healthcare, beginning today. In fact, any veteran who is enrolled in VA healthcare will be given a comprehensive initial toxic exposure screening and they will receive follow-up screenings at least every five years. Vietnam and Cold War era veterans, there are different, a couple of things that have been added. The biggest things for the Vietnam era are the fact that during certain time periods, Thailand, Laos, Johnson and Atoll, or if you were on a ship that called there, Cambodia, Guam, or America, Samoa, or you were within their territorial waters, could be eligible to benefits related to Agent Orange exposure where they previously had not been. As far as Agent Orange presumptive conditions, they have added two conditions. Monoclonal gamopathy of undetermined significance and then hypertension, and that is the big one. We have put in claims for hypertension before based on Agent Orange exposure and they've been denied. But with the passing of the PACT Act, we expect that we're going to be seeing a lot more of those claims getting approved. In fact, the VA is telling veterans, submit your claims now, even though they won't be, started to be processed until the beginning of the year. But they want to get a jump on it. There are also benefits for veterans who participated in certain nuclear response or cleanup activities in the, in one, I can't even, every time I see that word, I want to say Ewoks, but it's not. And it would attack Atoll, Palomera, Spain, and Thule, Greenland. Gulf War veterans, Gulf War and post-9/11 veterans. Gulf War and post-9/11 veterans. They have over 20 conditions that are now added as presumptive conditions to the things they could have been exposed to, a lot of which are connected to burn pits, a lot of respiratory issues, and things that wouldn't have been approved earlier. Melanoma is something, skin cancer has been one of the things we've seen that has been denied a lot. And asthma, and now asthma, as long as it was diagnosed after service, could be service-connected as well. The impact this is going to have on our office, we are expecting to see an increase, not just from the younger veterans coming, getting out, but we are expecting to see some of the veterans we've already gotten service-connected, coming in to get service-connected for things that the PACT Act now covers, as well as those who were originally denied access to VA healthcare due to one reason or another, may now have that eligibility, and we assist them in getting enrolled there as well. The staff that we have, that was up here during the presentation of the proclamation, that is, everyone except our clerical staff and every single person carries their weight and more to make sure that these veterans are taken care of. And we are doing our best to keep up with the increased load. But once again, hypertension, high blood pressure, it's going to skyrocket with our Vietnam veterans. So. And that is all I have.
Any board members have any questions? Supervisor Calaway?
Going back to your statistics?
Yes.
The total claims submitted to 85, and the number of veterans submitted was 190. Who were the others? Family members?
The others were, the compensation claims are the ones that bring in the money. There are other claims that we submit for what we call a driver's license, where the veteran can come in, they'll get a form from us to take to DMV, have veteran put on their driver's license.
Oh, so it's a different types, not just?
Correct.
Oh, got it.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The compensation claims are the, that's why I kind of carved those out of the, out of the statistics. But the total claims, we are entering for other things than just the compensation claims. There are pension claims also, that is for veterans who are low income. If they're under a certain threshold, the VA will supplement to get them to the VA's maximum threshold, which I think is a little over $14,000 a year.
What are the roadblocks, if any, that you'd see? And what you all agree?
Reaching the veterans that, a lot of veterans don't have transportation, especially in our more rural areas. Mr. Poblano, who spoke earlier, is our Veterans Outreach Coordinator. We were lucky enough to get a vehicle from HHSA to use, and he goes out and tries, his job is to find the veterans and bring them to our office, get us, help us get the services to them they can. We have the ability to go out to the veterans, if that's possible. A lot of times, especially in the more rural areas, there's not a lot of connectivity as far as computers, so we are doing a lot of our paperwork manually with them at their homes. If they have Wi-Fi, then we can bring a small laptop that we have with us. But it's a matter of being able to get out. We only have the one vehicle, and sometimes we have to go and check another one out. That's one of the biggest things. But just getting out there and letting the people know that we're here and what we're doing is the biggest thing. Like I said at the fair, "We didn't know you existed," and I've heard that the last two years we were there. But we do see, we see surges, especially after the fair and after big outreaches and stuff. But after, after that kind of goes away, there's a lull, and we wind up working with others. We do have more outreach events planned. The support groups are ongoing, and we continually get new people coming to those. Just last night, Angela Shively and our court, our Veterans Program Coordinator, Neil Parish, who runs the support groups, they gave an educational class at the Diggins and Murphy's to about 25 veterans and family members about what was available as far as the support groups, as well as what was available for benefits. And we're looking to expand that to other communities as well, so.
Supervisor Garmenti?
Thank you very much, Brian. And I was pleased to learn for the first time today that you're from Railroad Flack.
I am.
So it's good. So you know the upcountry, and thank you for all that work in bringing the veterans together today in these regular updates. As a cousin of a burn pit casualty, my cousin, you know, I'm very excited about the PACT Act and him getting help that he deserves.
Yes.
My question is, do we track our county employees who are veterans? I know I was sitting here when we were talking earlier, and I saw Nick, I saw Robert, and a bunch of veterans sitting out there.
Well, we don't track them as of yet. It's something we've been talking about, doing, because we want, in fact, during the health fair, we had our booth out there for the employees to come and talk to us. We handed, I was out there, I talked to a bunch of people, and even employees whose spouses are veterans, to get them connected. And we are going to try and find a way to get the information about who's veteran, who isn't. And unfortunately, there are some veterans out there who don't want to be identified. There are veterans out there who don't believe they were veterans because they didn't go to a foreign country and fight in war. They just were back here and keeping home fires burning, whatever. But it is something we're looking into doing, because my understanding is, there's about 60 is the rough guess I've heard. That's the rumor. But we're going to kind of figure it out and see what we can do and make sure that we get them connected as well.
Yeah, that's going to be a significant portion of our population, and as you know, Veterans Network, we hope they do, and so we can use our own people. And I certainly hope that we, as a county, I don't know if we officially do, but I certainly hope that we work hard to recruit our veterans as employees here. We're the largest employer in the county, and we send disproportionate amount of young men and women into the armed services, and it'd be nice to give them a place to work when they come home, since we're always recruiting, so.
Yes.
I hope our board thinks that's a priority in the future, and I know they do. But how do we institutionalize that and then track them and provide them the services that they need? But thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you all for the support you've given us since I've been in this position. And if you'd allow me, I'd like to give you each one of the challenge coins that we've recently received to give to our veterans, starting this Thursday. We are having a Freedom Day event in Angel's Camp at the Middleton Shopping Center parking lot. Dr. Shannon Russell will be providing dental exams and cleanings for veterans, and we'll have other vendors there as well. Our office will be there to talk about benefits. There's going to be sandwiches provided by Angel's Food Market for veterans and their family members that come with them. And we hope it, we're expecting it's going to be a decent turnout. It's going to be from 9:00 till 2:00 on Thursday, the 10th.
Brian, am I going to have to take a picture? I don't have that in my pocket in my mind.
Are you coming to Veterans Day at our parking lot?
I have Mr. Parish and Mr. Poblano.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Unfortunately, it will not be, actually, November 11th is my birthday, so.
Happy birthday, Brian.
I'm sorry? No, I don't think so, but I wish.
All day, Brian, all day.
All day. It's an all-day party. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the work you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your staff, tremendous staff.
I would be nothing without that staff. They are 100% dedicated to the job and to the veterans that they serve completely. And without them, this would, I wouldn't be here right now, so.
Hear nothing but great things about them. So you guys, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is an informational item, but we do want to see if there's any public comment.
There is no online public comment.
Okay. And CNN in the room. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Yes. We're going to take a break, a minute break here, before Supervisor stop her. Welcome back. Next, we have regular agenda item number 30. I'll have the clerk read out.
Item 30, Agreement Assessor. Approve the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, creating the California County Assessor's Information Technology Authority and authorize the county assessor to execute the agreement. Leslie.
Good morning, Leslie.
Good morning. Boy, that was a mouthful, Stacy. Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Board, Leslie Davis, County Assessor. This is the item that I came to you two weeks ago to discuss, so that you had an opportunity to ask questions and perhaps hash out anything. This is the final agreement that's going out to all 58 counties. I'm getting emails all morning telling me that counties across the state have been approving it. We're just a little further down on the agenda, I think. So really, no changes. The JPA hasn't changed since I talked to you. The plan is still a joint powers authority that allows the state to disburse the first $10 million in funding. This is a three-year grant program, $10 million per year, coming to the assessors for the purpose of creating shared services with information technology. And hopefully, it will help all 58 counties, as well as all of the taxpayers who we serve. Happy to answer any questions you might have. I know that you've had to read twice in one month about it, and so I don't want to waste a lot of your time just standing here yammering.
Any questions from the board members? Okay. Okay. If there's no questions, then I'll make sure that we have public comment.
There is no online public comment.
Okay. And there's no public comment in the room. And CNN will bring it back to the board. And this is an action item, so is there a motion to approve?
I'll move this item.
If they second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Leslie.
If anybody has any questions, I'll direct them to you.
I'm sure you'll try.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay. Moving along. And next is regular agenda item number 31. If the clerk could please read out.
Item 31, Agreement to Integrated Waste Management. Approve and authorize the board chair to execute an agreement with Caltrans to reimburse integrated waste management for costs incurred not to exceed $75,000 as a result of hosting free dump days.
Jennifer.
Good morning, Madam Chair, respective members of the board. We have had an opportunity, an awesome opportunity, to partner with Caltrans District 10 and the Greater Valley Conservation Corps to bring a series of free dump days to Calaveras County. We will be holding our first, our first free dump day is November 12th, which is this Saturday. It's going to be in West Point. It will be accepting appliances, tires, and mattresses. The reason why we structured these days to only be accepting the appliances and tires primarily is because that's what serves our communities most. As far as our robust, solid waste system that we have in place, we don't need a free dump day for household trash. We provide that service countywide on a regular basis, so that wouldn't really speak to our needs of the community. So with that said, we are offering six days, and we encourage the residents to participate in the one closest to their community, and with the intent to reduce the congestion at each one of these events. So there is no cap on our materials that are being collected. And again, we didn't want to have a cap on it for the reason to maximize our participation in this program. So I am very pleased, and I can't thank Sam Sherman from District 10, Caltrans, enough. We really, it's been a true partnership, as well as Deb Phillips with the Greater Valley Conservation Corps. She's been fantastic in organizing the personnel for each one of these events. The school districts have been fantastic in allowing us to use their parking lots to hold these events, which is the Hazel Fisher Event coming up on the 19th, and West Point Elementary School in West Point is this, like I said, this Saturday, the 12th. And we will have a series of events, and I really encourage the residents to look for the dates coming up and participate in those events closest to their community to maximize our collection. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you board members might have.
Supervisor Garmenti?
Is this rain or shine?
This is rain or shine. Yes, I will be there, and with jackets, scarves, boots, I don't know. So we'll find out what we'll need.
Okay. That's the only question I had. Make sure everybody knows, rain or shine, we're going to be there.
We're going to be there. That's right.
Supervisor Garmenti?
Thank you very much, Jen. Thank you so much. How are we doing in getting word out to some of these, you know, sometimes where the garbage stacks, the deepest communication is the least. How are we doing there?
Well, as far as the West Point event, I was able to collaborate with Nancy over at the library. She sent flyers up to the school. The school folders got all flyers put in, so all the families and the children from school took it home. We've been able to hand out flyers at the transfer station and the annex, the yard waste facility up in Willseville. Estimated about 250 flyers have gone into the hands of people. So I'm hoping that we have accessed those that are harder to access. And Facebook pages, I have reached out to Blue Mountain Coalition, and they've also done some promoting online and putting posters and flyers up at regular community frequented places, Ace and Dollar General and things like that. So I've been trying to kind of tap into just that community to really kind of spread the word, as that it does travel fast in that community, if you get it to the right people.
It sounds like you knew the right people, so.
Right.
Also, just a quick comment. I went down to Rock Creek the other day in my role as assistant, and the place looked great. So call Mr. You and your crew.
Thank you. They're doing a fantastic job down there and working hard every day, so we appreciate that.
Supervisor Calaway?
Are the tires going to go to Rock Creek? I mean, I wasn't real clear where all the appliances and the tires, because we used to collect tires years ago, and we stopped doing it. So where will they go? They go to Rock Creek, and then where would they go?
No. Actually, the way that I've structured this is Castle Tire, who we contract with already, will be bringing bins directly to these events. They'll collect them, they'll go straight to their recycling facility. So it will not go to Rock Creek. It will not affect IWM staff in any way. It was because we are, you know, on short-staffed, as everybody is, I really wanted to reduce that impact on IWM and staff members. So Castle Tire, like I said, will drop a big trailer, a 20-foot- like I said, will drop a big trailer, a 20-foot, like a tractor trailer kind of style trailer that will be loaded, and then they take it down to their facility directly. Now, the appliances will be collected and transported to Rock Creek. So there will be some impact as far as evacuating those appliances, refrigerators and things of that nature, and packaging up, recycling, things like that. But in the hopes is that we've scheduled these far enough away from each other where the impact won't be so great on Rock Creek staff that will have any kind of pileup of appliances. They'll be able to get through them pretty quickly.
If we can, I'm not sure we can, get the Highway 4 cleanup crew active on the 19th. And would they be able to bring the truckload of appliances to Hazel Fisher?
Yes, they will.
Okay. Thank you.
And with that, I would like to also add real quick that I have partnered also with the volunteer sheriffs, and they're going to be out there helping with traffic control, too. So I'd like to thank them for their involvement, especially up in West Point. It could be a little chilly that day, but they were more than happy to come out and help direct traffic for us.
Supervisor, stopper.
May it just be a typo. Here on the dates and your locations, if you go to packet page 699, it says for West Point and Arnold, you'll also be doing mattresses. Did we just forget to put them on the San Andreas Angels Camp, Valley Springs and Coppaopolis sites?
No.
Those also be collected?
No, and we only have the option to do two events in 2022 with the mattress collection. So I strategically placed those up country, which are the furthest away from Rock Creek, to facilitate the needs of the community up country. So we're only going to be able to collect mattresses at those two up-country events.
Thank you.
Three of these are 2023, so there won't be any events in 2023.
We're negotiating that one.
Okay, so.
For the mattresses, is that what you're referencing?
I get it. We talked before, Jennifer. Mattresses is a big thing. We receive so many of them. It seems like everyone's, what, twice the amount of people that live in Calaveras turn them in every year? I mean, it's a, it's a thing.
It is a thing. It is a thing. And just because our only mattress collection center is Rock Creek, that's why I did have the up-country ones have that kind of advantage of having the mattress collection. However, we will get the opportunity to have, once the 2023 year, we'll have those two opportunities again. So we are trying to organize at least one or two additional events with mattresses. But before I included that as part of a material that we would be collecting, I wanted to be sure that those dates were nailed down with the mattress council.
Thank you. Are there any, Louida?
Is there going to be any question where these came from? I'm thinking if you have a plumber wanting to bring five water heaters or six, are we going to say no, we're not?
This is for residents only, so there will be ID checks at the check station. So people will have to provide their, some sort of residency, just like we would at a transfer station or Rock Creek. We, like I said, we are not capping. We would really like to encourage just residents to clean out their properties, their yards, their garages. We would try to, we ask that businesses don't fill our trailers and spaces with their commercial refuse, but what my goal is, is to collect as much as we can. And this will help in turn our processing down at Rock Creek as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board before I turn it over to public comment? None. Okay. Is there any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. And see none in the room. We'll bring it back to the board. This is an action item. Is there a motion to approve?
Would the consideration of possibly amending one of the up-country places to something closer? Joke. We're just.
No, it's not giving a drive. Been no.
Yeah, no, I get the thought process behind it, so. With that said, I'll make a motion.
Okay, there's a motion.
And I'll second it.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I did bring some copies of the flyers for the next two events. If you wanted some hard copies, I emailed them, but just in case. I'm sorry. I will email you one. Yes, what was?
I just wanted to keep track of who collects the most tires.
Well, I will let you know.
You just emailed that to us, you said?
I have emailed it, but I can email it again, absolutely. And I will continue to email as we update the flyers with.
That's not an updated one from what you emailed earlier?
This is for Saturdays.
Saturdays and the following, the 19th in Arnold, both copies. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have regular agenda item number 32. I'll have the clerk read out.
Item 32, resolution planning, find project exempt from SEQA, conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution establishing Agricultural Preserve and Williamson Act Contract 391 for a total of 270 acres for Robert and Ashley Friend.
Gina, do you need to be up here, or are you okay there? You can come up here if you want.
I'm fine.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I don't have anything fancy for you guys.
Okay.
You're just going to listen to me talk for about five minutes, and then we'll be done.
Okay.
All right.
We've got the stopper.
Starting now, right? Okay. Good morning, everyone. So as you all know how this works, we've got, these are actually broken up into two parts. So the first part will be the establishment of the contract itself, and the second item that we'll hear after will be the zoning upon establishment. Did you have a question, Amanda?
Oh, no, it's not for you, Gina. You're okay.
Oh, okay.
I do. I'm sorry to interrupt, but Madam Chair, and I apologize if I missed it, but we should open the public hearing. Sorry.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Okay, moving on.
You've got six minutes.
Okay, all right, thanks. So the county received California Land Conservation Contract Application 391 for Robert and Ashley Friend. It's comprised of 270 acres, one legal parcel and two assessor parcels. The property is located approximately one and a half miles southwest of the town of Alacito, tucked right in between Borbie Ranch Road and Red Hill Road. Currently, the property is leased to the Rasmussen Ranch. They operate 20, their ag operation consists of 24 head of beef cattle that generates a gross annual income of $18,000 annually. Feasibility study was done on the property conducted by Scott Onetto, our county farm advisor, and the feasibility study indicates that the land is capable of producing a gross annual income of $54.45 per acre annually. Both of these exceed the minimum requirements to be eligible for a Williamson Act, which is $2,000 set forth by Board Resolution 75489. Being 270 acres, the parcel meets the minimum 100-acre requirement for the Williamson Act and 50 acres for the ag preserve zone. The property is designated by the County General Plan as resource production and as well as working land, which indicates or identifies lands capable and primarily used for ag operations, including lands with conservation easements. This area of the county is noted as being in a very high fire hazard area. Grazing livestock will obviously reduce the vegetation that can be seen as flammable fuels. Maintaining land and agriculture will encourage best management practices, managing brush, elimination of invasive plant species, developing water systems, all will help to reduce and manage the risk of wildfire exposure. Wildlife is abundant, and some of which are protected species. Policies of the conservation and open space element of the general plan encourage open space for the preservation of natural resources. Flip my page. Such as wildlife habitat, in addition to the management, managed production of resources, including our forest, rangeland, and agriculture land. The area surrounding the property is mostly resource production and working land, zoned for intense agricultural operations. Existing operations in the area include grazing land for livestock, growing hay, vineyards, as well as a few orchards. In addition, smaller parcels are utilized for personal-scale farming and ranching activities. Zoning this property ag preserve and establishing it as a Williamson Act is consistent with the surrounding zoning and land uses currently in place in the area. On August 24th, the, your appointed ag advisory committee met, taking into consideration information provided by planning and the applicants, as well as the application, they voted to recommend that you establish this contract. In conclusion, staff finds this proposal consistent with the goals and policies of the County General Plan. This request is consistent with surrounding zoning and land use. And additionally, the California Land Conservation Contract Application meets the minimum requirement set forth by Board of Supervisors Resolution 75489, in addition to Chapter 17.18 of County Zoning Ordinance. Do you have any questions?
Any question by the board? See none. Is there any public comment?
There's no online public comment.
Okay, and see none in the room? Okay, we're closed. Yes.
I'll move this item, Madam Chair.
Okay. I got to close the public hearing. Okay, so see no public comment and no questions to staff. At this time, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move this item.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is there a second by Louida? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. See none. Pass this by though.
Good job, Gina.
How much time do I have?
You have like a minute, 30 seconds left.
It's a new item. The clock restarts.
Next, we have regular agenda item number 33. I'll have the clerk read out.
Item 33, ordinance planning. One, find project exempt from SEQA. Two, authorize summary publication and a brief property description. And three, conduct a public hearing and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN 057015024 and 057018008 from general agriculture to agricultural preserve for established agricultural preserve and Williamson Act Contract 391 totaling 270 acres for Robert and Ashley Friend.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. Gina.
So part two. The AP zone applies to lands for which a Williamson Act contract has been executed, which you just did. The ag preserve zone is consistent with the resource production and the working land land use designation in the general plan. Being 270 acres, the parcel meets the minimum 50-acre requirement for an ag preserve. On October 13th, your appointed planning commission voted 4-1 with Commissioner Booster being absent, recommending the adoption of an ordinance changing the zoning upon establishment of California Land Conservation Contract 391.
Is there any board questions, Ben? Your lights on. Okay. Okay, is there any public comment? I'll start with you.
There is no online public comment.
Okay, and see none in the room. Bring it back. I will close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, passes by though. Next, we have regular agenda item number 34. I'll have the clerk read out.
Item 34, resolution planning, find project exempt from SEQA, conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution amending established agricultural preserve and Williamson Act Contract 333 to include APN 052001036, a 75.32-acre parcel, increasing the total contract and preserve to 438.49 acres for Dave Kasek and Libby Raider Kasek.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. Gina.
Okay. For disclosure, Libby Kasek is my cousin. Moving on, we've got county has received California Land Conservation Contract Application to amend existing contract 333 for Dave and Libby Kasek. This application proposes to add a 75.32-acre parcel to their existing contract, which currently consists of 363.17 acres. The property is located at 4805 Pool Station Road in San Andres, approximately five miles south of the State Highway 49 and Pool Station intersections in San Andres. The Kases have been leasing this land for the past 28 years, utilizing it as grazing land for their goats and cattle. They've reported a gross annual income of $6,900 from their agriculture production. Feasibility study was conducted on the property, indicating the parcel has the capability of producing a gross annual income of $29.70 per acre annually. Both of these exceed the minimum requirement eligible for the Williamson Act, which is $2,000, obviously set forth by Board of Supervisors Resolution 75489. Upon inclusion of the 75 acres, the total will be 489.49 acres, and this parcel, the parcel meets the minimum 100-acre requirement for a Williamson Act and 50-acre requirement for the ag preserve zone. The property is designated by the County General Plan as resource production, which obviously identifies lands capable and primarily used for agricultural operations, including lands with conservation easements. On August 24th, the Ag Advisory Committee met, taking under consideration information provided by planning and the applicant. They voted to recommend that you establish this amended contract. Staff finds that this proposal is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan. This request is consistent with the surrounding zoning and land use. Additionally, the California Land Conservation Contract Application meets the minimum requirement set forth by Board of Supervisors Resolution 7549, as well as Chapter 17.18 of County Zoning Ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions? Ben, your lights on. Okay, just got the talking. Okay, is there any public comment on June?
There's no online public comment.
And see none in the room? Sir? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. If there's no questions, I will close the public hearing and see if there is a motion.
I'll move this item.
Okay, it's moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See none, passes by though. We'll move on to item number 34, and I have the, I mean, 35, and the clerk will read out. Sorry.
Item 35, ordinance planning. One, find project exempt from SEQA. Two, authorize summary publication and a brief property description. And three, conduct a public hearing and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN 052001036 from general agriculture to agricultural preserve for amended agricultural preserve and Williamson Act Contract 333 totaling 438.49 acres for Dave Kasek and Libby Raider Kasek.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. Gina.
So now we just need to rezone this parcel from A1 to AP, which signifies it's under Williamson Act contract. That will be APN 052-001-036 for 75.32 acres.
Is there any questions by the board? See none. Are there any public comments on June?
There's no online public comments.
Any public comments in the audience? See none. Bring it back. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move this item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, passes by though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Thanks, Gina. Thank you, Gina. Thanks, Gina.
Okay, so move on. We've got supervisor announcements up next. I will start to my left with Supervisor Calaway.
Nothing to report.
Supervisor, do you have any?
Nothing to report.
Thank you.
Nothing to report.
Supervisor, stopper.
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Well, I'm just, the only thing I have to report is we will all be going to CSAC next week, so I think the majority of the board will be down there. And.
Maybe we can have lunch together.
Ha, ha, ha. And I will be presenting on Monday morning at the Most Supervisors Institute. So, anyways, with that, if there's nothing else, we'll close for the day. We'll see everyone in a couple of weeks.